It is six o'clock and I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, April eighteen, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. Before we start tonight, I'd like to take a moment to say a few words before we start our regular business. We lost a member today of our community and he wasn't just a member, but he was a great and cherished friend to all of Glen County. Milton Henry Woodside, our dear friend Woody, succumbed today. Woody led our Chamber of Commerce for thirty-four years, retiring in twenty nineteen. We wouldn't know that he had retired because he was just as active after his retirement as he ever was during. And there weren't many events that you could ever go to that you didn't see Woody there. Not only was he present, he was active and always had a smile that was warm and welcoming. His love for Dunne County was boundless and as was his energy and drive to get things done. And everyone knew him. And when I say everyone, I think I mean everyone throughout the state. When he was recognized on the Georgia Senate floor, he was called the institution of South Georgia. The work Woody did for our community can be seen every day, all over, and we will forever honor him with our drive to continue to move forward. We remember him tonight and extend our prayers and comfort to his wife Ellen, their family members, and all his friends in Glen County. And with that, I would like to propose that we add an amendment to our posted agenda to add item two point five to the published agenda to consider authorizing lowering the flags on Glen County property to half mask in honor of Woody Woodside on the day of his funeral service. In addition to that, I propose that we add item six point five to the published agenda under general business to accept the conveyance of point two eight five acres of right-of-way for Frederica Road adjacent to the Lake cottages from Lake Colleges LLC. Those two items, I'll bring in the form of a motion to add. Have a, I made the motion, Commissioner Clark added the second. Any comment? All in favor, please raise your right hand. With that, we'll get back to our regular agenda. I will give the invocation tonight and I've asked Commissioner Swett if he would lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with us, please.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with summer hearts. We have lost a treasured member of our community, one that worked so hard and diligently at everything that he did. And he'll be sorely missed, but Father, we know that you are in control. We thank you for your love, for your grace, your mercy. We pray that you would be with us this night through all of our deliberations, that we might lift you up, bring praise and honor to your name. We thank you for all of our first responders, both here in our county, working for Glen County and City of Brunswick Sheriff's Department. We just, we just thank you for each of these responders. We also pray for our military. We pray for Israel, Father, for your protection. We ask that you just go with us, guide and direct us. May we lift you up and praise your name in all things. Amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, hand over the heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Tonight, we have the privilege of making two proclamations. Item number one is to present a proclamation recognized in April twenty-one through twenty-seven of twenty twenty-four as Glen County Crimes Victims Rights Week. And if you'll indulge me while I read that proclamation, it reads as follows. Whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. And whereas Crime Victims Rights Week passed here in Georgia and at the federal level guaranteed victims the right to meaningfully my apologies, to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentences and when applicable restitution processes. And whereas including and elevating the voices of survivors makes certain that they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust. And whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. And whereas survivors' lived experience can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. And whereas National Crimes Victim Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas the Glen County Commissioners are hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that we do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four as Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. And expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. In witness thereof, I set my hand this eighteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four. Would our DA please come forward?
Just want to say on behalf of all the members, we appreciate the job you do for our service back to our voters, for our country. And there's things that each of them feel for the job that America does, we appreciate it. And thank you for all you do. We think our work's worth it. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to remove item four. I will read it. Exercise the fourth year renewal option for Jones Maintenance Company for tree trimming and removal services. It's a duplicate item of number twenty-four. So we're going to remove that one. And I would like to add to the published consent agenda, general business, to add item six point five to the published consent agenda, general business, to accept the conveyance of point two eight five acres of right-of-way for Frederica Road adjacent to Lake cottages from Lake cottages LLC.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion to add six point five to the consent agenda and to remove item number four from the consent agenda. Any discussion? I have an item for consent finance. Is that later? Or is it next? Okay. All right. So any discussion? We've got a motion from Commissioner Rupofoski. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Rupofoski to approve the consent agenda. Two seconds from Commissioner Tosterson and Swett. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. General business, item number seven. Approve contract terms, conditions, and schedules to enter into an agreement with Paycom for a new humans resources and payroll information system utilizing an information technology procurement exemption with an initial investment of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cent funded by ARPA and an approximate ongoing annual cost of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars with funding to be provided by the finance department operating budget and a reduction of approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars annually from the information technology and HR budgets for an overall net increase in annual cost of approximately sixty-three thousand dollars. And we have our finance director, Mr. Mary Munson, with us tonight.
Good evening Commissioners. I know you have a very long meeting, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I wanted to be here to provide just a little bit of an overview of what we're looking at purchasing with Paycom and be available if you have any questions. So as part of our county's strategic plan, our number one goal is to cultivate a culture of service excellence. And that is the goal that I'm actually in charge of. And one of the focuses of that goal is to bring in technologies that are going to improve service both internally and externally. So I'm not going to go through all of the strategic initiatives, but these eight on the screen here are the strategic initiatives that will be impacted with the purchase of this software system. I know you cannot read this, but this is our current payroll and benefits environment today. We use about five different softwares, Excel spreadsheets. We do a lot of things on paper. A lot of things are manual. So all of these different products and systems will be combined into one human resources and payroll system. Little bit of information on how Paycom affects the organization at the executive leadership level, management level, and in the employee level. Particularly in the employee level, employees are able to see what their paycheck will be on their phone, on an app, prior to submitting their time. So they can make sure that their time was entered correctly. Managers and supervisors can approve time off from an app on their phone. So it's a very streamlined process and does away with a lot of the paper processes that we have now. I'm not going to go through the details of this, but these are all the benefits that will be provided with the Paycom system. One of, just as an example, one of the things that we have to do manually in payroll is when poll workers work an election, the IRS says the first two thousand dollars that they make are not taxed. When they hit two thousand and a penny, we have to go back and tax the whole first two thousand. Our system currently doesn't do that. So we have to manually keep up with this on a spreadsheet and then manually go back and calculate those taxes for every poll worker. It's hundreds of hours that we spend each year just doing that. And that's just one tiny example. FMLA tracking, our HR department manually tracks FMLA. So if you apply for FMLA, you get a twelve-month rolling, I'm sorry, a twelve-week rolling cycle for coverage under federal law. All of that is tracked manually, payroll by payroll, person by person. So this system is going to save us hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time. We are very excited about the efficiencies that it's going to bring and also the great new technologies it's going to bring to our employees to have everything right at their fingertips. Scheduling is another example. We currently use multiple different systems for scheduling. Our police, fire, and all of our departments will be able to schedule in this system. So lots of great benefits. And analysis of the cost of this product. The annual cost is approximately three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars a year. And our current systems that we're able to cancel by taking on this, which is about five different systems, is going to save us approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. There's also going to be an approximate savings of ten thousand dollars a year in advertising costs
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question per se, but I have a comment. Company I work for, we use Paycom currently, and we have for the last three years. The employees, and I'll be real brief about it. The benefit to the employees is fantastic. I do payroll for about eighty-five people on Monday morning, and it takes me about ten minutes. The efficiencies with it, the employees don't have to go to their department head and find out how many vacation hours or bother, they got it all on their phone. So this program, after a year, it's a no-brainer, I'm telling you folks. This is a great product, and I want to commend y'all for going out and finding this. It's going to save us money, and it's going to put the employees having availability to know what they have available, sick, personal, all that. Plus, it's going to free up, I don't know how many hours, management has to tie up with tracking down pay, time cards, whatever we do it. So by far, this is a good win for Glen County.
Thank you for those comments. I do want to recommend our HR Director, Dwayne Pollock. He was, he took the initiative and went out and started looking at different systems and brought this one back for review. And we spent about twelve to fifteen hours with the groups over multiple days going through all of the system to make sure it was exactly what we needed. One last comment I'll make is on the application side. I had a applicant a few months ago apply for a position, and she said, I should be, get the job just for being able to make it through the application process. She said, that is the worst application I've ever had to fill out. And she had filled out some federal applications in the past. So we have a very tough process, and this is going to replace that entire onboarding application recruitment process. It's not just payroll, but it's all of the HR functions. So we're very excited about this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comment? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the contract terms, conditions, and schedules to enter into an agreement with Paycom for a new human resources and payroll information system utilizing an information technology procurement exemption with an initial investment of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cent funded by ARPA and approximately ongoing annual cost of three hundred and fifty-three thousand with funding being provided by the Finance Department operating budget and a reduction of approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars annually from the information technology and HR budgets for an overall net increase in an annual cost of approximately sixty-three thousand dollars.
Second.
Aren't you glad you didn't have to read that again? So we have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I must apologize in my emotion earlier. I voted to, made a recommendation to add item two point five to our agenda tonight, but we didn't actually take that up. So we'll go back to item two point five. And that is to consider authorizing the lower of the flags on county property to half-mast in honor of Woody Woodside on the day of his funeral service. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Rofolsky. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Also would like to recognize that Mr. Fallon just came in the room. Mr. Fallon, I'm going to tell him where you've been. He was in Washington, DC today, receiving an award for the best of the best. And he received that honor while at Fletzy. And I can't remember the details, Bill, but it's quite an honor to be recognized in the Capitol for the achievements that he had while he was with the Federal Law Enforcement Center. And he, straight from his flight, straight back here to county manager. We want to commend you, Bill, on a great achievement. Thank you for your service there. Thank you for your service to Glen County.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
I'll just interrupt and go.
Sorry, go.
Sort of an unusual night tonight. We'll apologize for any of these disruptions. But item number eight tonight, under general business, this award a contract to Thomas and Hutton for project management services for the St. Simons Island Gateway and Torres Causeway Traffic Improvements Project and the Demery Road Improvements and Drainage Project in an amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars with funding to be provided by Splotch Twenty-two Fund. And Mr. Gentry, I believe you're going to make that presentation tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff does bring this recommendation of award to Thomas and Hutton, as you so indicated. A little background on this, this was a Splotch Twenty-two project referendum that included improvements to the gateway as well as the end of the causeway. It also, we are combining this project with the Demery Road Drainage and Traffic Improvements as well. We received, after RFP in January, we received five responsive bidders. Of the five, we interviewed three after initial screening of those. And of the three, Thomas and Hutton hands down turned out and presented themselves as the most qualified candidate to serve in this manner for us. And we look at, normally a project is a short-term project. We anticipate this project from the time that we hire the Thomas and Hutton to the time that we're driving, I guess, traffic-free, about a four-year process. So this is a group that's going to be a part of our team for an extended period of time and an extension of our team especially in the contract administration. So that is going to be the, one of the most extensive parts of this project management experience for us, is really being involved heavily in the actual construction administration. So with that being said, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have of the project and the staff who makes this recommendation.
All right. Commissioners, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I know that we've had opportunity to be briefed on this, so this is not new to us. Entertain a motion?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve the recommendation. There we go. All our different stuff over here. To award a contract to Thomas and Hutton for management services for St. Simons Island Gateway and Torres Causeway Traffic Improvement Projects and the Demery Road Improvements and Drainage Project in the amount of one point four, four, seven, six hundred thousand dollars with funding to be provided by Splotch Twenty-two Two Fund.
All right. Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig. Dual seconds from Commissioner Rofolsky and Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion?
Just one comment. This is another triad of the road improvements and drainage improvements, which is so critical for St. Simons. This involves, as it says, Demery Road, which will provide ditching and getting rid of open ditches and also widening that will feed into the gateway at St. Simons and of course, the traffic flowing in from Sea Island Road. So I appreciate the support of citizens and all the staff that took a lot of time to put this together and get this passed, but it was, we're able to do it because the voters approved this through Splotch. And I wanted to say thank you to them, and we're making headway now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for finance with anything a Commissioner wishes to pull.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky.
Yes, I'd like to pull item twenty, just for a brief discussion.
Item twenty. All right, so. We have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number twenty that would be pulled for discussion. Any other discussion on that? All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And then Commissioner Swett, item number twenty.
Yes, we approved this in Finance Committee, and I'm in favor of this item. We have, we have the terms and conditions which were provided in our agenda, and I just wanted to make sure that we covered this. It's a single-source exemption for billboard to support the Glen County Police Department in staffing. And the single-source exemption is because of the location, it's down south of Jacksonville. And the intent is, with that advertising, is not to compete locally against local departments for staffing. And we do have the terms and conditions, which are, it's a four-month.
Three months.
Three-month, ending July fourteen of twenty-four. The total cost is nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents.
That's all I had. Chief Ebner, did you have?
Commissioner, you hit all the points. That's absolutely correct. It's a targeted location is why that area was chosen.
Yes. All right, do, is there any discussion on this? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the terms and conditions and authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Clear Channel Billboard Services utilizing a single-source exemption for the Glen County Police Department's recruiting campaign with funding to be provided by the Police Fund operating budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Swett, a second by Commissioner Fendig. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving to item number forty. These are alcohol license, these are public hearings. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes to each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present the group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number forty is considered the issuance of a twenty-twenty-four alcoholic beverage license to JB Bernard for JB's Shrimp Shack Restaurant located at twenty-seven, twenty-nine Highway Seventeen South, Brunswick, Georgia, three-one-five-two-three. The license is to sell malt beverages and wine for consumption on premises, no Sunday sales permitted. JB Bernard is the licensee, and Chief Ebner?
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Upon my review and the paperwork, as well as the necessary requirements that we checked, I see no issues that would preclude this applicant from being approved.
Thank you, Chief. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, any comment? All right, this is a public hearing. Any who wish to speak in opposition to considering this alcoholic beverage license for JB's Shrimp Shack, please come forward and state your name for the record, please. Any opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of it. Any who wish to speak in favor of this application for an alcoholic beverage license to JB's Shrimp Shack Restaurant, please come forward, state your name for the record. All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close this public hearing. Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here tonight? That is a requirement for this.
Okay, thank you, and thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the license condition for JB's Shrimp Shack. It's located at twenty-seven, twenty-nine Highway Seventeen South, Brunswick, Georgia.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Your license is approved. Item number, excuse me. Item number forty-one is considered the issuance of a twenty-twenty-four alcoholic beverage license to Jimmy Tabin Patel for I-95 Vape and Groceries, a convenience store located at fifty-three, thirty-five New Jessup Highway, Brunswick, Georgia, three-one-five-two-three. The license is for retail packaged sales of malt beverages and wine, Sunday sales permitted. Mr. Patel is the licensee, and I'll go ahead and ask, is he here? I see. All right, Chief Ebner? Got it right the second time.
Yes. So on item forty-one, again, Commissioners, after review and the appropriate checks, I see no issues that would preclude this applicant from being approved.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to an alcoholic beverage license to I-95 Vape and Groceries, please come forward, state your name for the record. Any who would speak in opposition? We will close that portion of the public hearing. Any who wish to speak in favor of an alcoholic beverage license to I-95 Vape and Groceries, please come forward, state your name for the record. Any to speak in favor? Then we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the issuance of a twenty-twenty-four alcoholic beverage license to J-Tabin Patel for I-95 Vape and Groceries, a convenience store located at fifty-three, thirty-five New Jessup Highway, Brunswick, Georgia. License is for retail packaged sales of malt beverages and wine, Sunday sales permitted.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Y'all have your license. Item number forty-two is a public hearing for land use. It is ZM dash two-four dash four, forty-one oh seven, Knight Street rezoned. Consideration of a rezon for forty-one oh seven and forty-one oh five Knight Street from GI General Industrial to PD Plan Development. The existing development is in non-conforming for its lot size. The change to keep the same uses but reduce the lot requirement, making it conform to zoning parcels ID zero-three dash zero-eight-nine-three-three and zero-three dash zero-eight-nine-three-two. Jake Lemmons, Robert Civil Engineer, Agent for KGN Holdings LLC, Lenny Eterno is owner. And good evening, sir.
Yes, sir. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we do have a rezoning for forty-one oh seven and forty-one oh five Knight Street. The property is one point six-three acres, and it is currently zoned GI General Industrial. Here is the site. As you see, it is on the corner, well, adjacent to the corner of Cedar Street, along Knight Street with a rear of Norwich Street, three forty-one. There is a companion site plan for this property, a ninety-nine-hundred square foot warehouse that was conditionally approved in condition to this rezoning being approved. The PD is asking for a front setback of twenty-five feet and side setbacks of seven feet and a rear setback of seven feet. And there would also be a reduction in the lot area required. And here is the proposed zoning that was in your packet. Again, the uses would remain the same, it's just a change to the lot requirements for the property. And here is your zoning exhibit showing both parcels. Parcel on the left has an existing warehouse. And the parcel on the right is vacant. And here's the conditionally approved site plan. Showing the new warehouse and parking and infrastructure in conformance to the requested setbacks. And here's the existing site. The MPC did recommend approval with a unanimous vote. The MPC did recommend approval with a unanimous vote. And here are your possible motions. And we do have a representative from Robert Civil Engineering as well, and that is all from staff.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments before we open the public?
It was six oh on MPC. Who, who was absent?
Commissioner Higgins was absent.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This, and this is going to be just a warehouse?
From my understanding, yes.
So are they taking down the existing warehouse or they're adding to the?
No, sir. The existing warehouse would remain. The property next door, the wooded lot would be where the new warehouse would be going.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Is, is, so it's just for, do we know what type of business would be there?
I'm not sure. I believe Mr. Lemmons would be able to expand upon that a little bit more.
Yeah, I would like to know.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lemmons, would you come forward?
Good afternoon. Jake Lemmons, Robert Civil Engineering. Let me go back here. To answer your question on the type of building, it is going to be a warehouse. So this, this building here, what it's used for is the manufacturer, doors, window frames, stuff like that in this building. I'm not sure if, from my understanding with the owner, they need more space, so they were requesting to build more. And he owns this property here, and he already own this building, if I can go back up to the site plan. So this is that existing building, and he's just looking to put an additional warehouse here. From my understanding, it's for these same tenants that are in this building. I can't confirm that, but that's what I was told initially.
Okay, all right.
Additionally, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We're really just trying to do cleanup on this. Like Chris said, it's, it's non-conforming due to the lot size requirements. We are following the same uses. It's General Industrial Warehouse is a use for General Industrial. So we're just trying to comply with the lot size requirements for, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Lemmons. Anything else before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two-four dash four, forty-one oh seven Knight Street rezoned. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this rezon, please come forward, state your name for the record. Any to speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of ZM dash two-four dash four, please come forward, state your name for the record. To speak in support. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and gentlemen, we're back to you.
Chris, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM twenty-four dash four as presented.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve ZM dash two-four point, dash four. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number forty-three, ZM dash two-four dash five, One Coastal Pines Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the PD Plan Development to allow for the construction of a surface mine, horticultural nursery, and mini warehouse at One Coastal Pine Circle Parcel zero three dash one six five one eight. Again, Mr. Lemmons from Robert Civil Engineering is here, agent for Flemington Product, Flemington Forest Properties LLC. Richard McKenna is the owner, and Mr. Carey, we're back to you.
Yes, sir. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Again, tonight, we do have a rezoning for One Coastal Pine Circle. Excuse me, a zoning amendment. Here is the site. Site is along Highway ninety-nine. And it is a one hundred forty thou- or one hundred forty acre tract. The PD amendment again would allow for, or is a request to allow for a surface mine, horticultural nursery, and mini warehouse usage. Surface mines are typically used as a precursor for drainage and ponds for future subdivisions. It's commonly used to sell dirt that is being excavated. And here is the actual text being modified with the addition of the three uses. Here is the site. And here is your zoning exhibit. The Mainland Planning Commission did vote to approve this unanimously as well. And here are your possible motions. Jake Lemmons is here to speak as well, and that is all from staff.
And I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear that last.
That is all from staff. Jake Lemmons is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, any comment? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two-four dash five. Any who wish to speak in opposition to ZM dash two-four dash five, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. To speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Any who wish to speak in favor of ZM dash two-four dash five, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Let me just say I'm Jake Lemmons. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have specifically, specifically about this project.
All right. Any others to speak in support? Then we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM twenty-four dash five as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve ZM dash two-four dash five. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Only five to go. We're doing well. Item number forty-four is ZM dash two-four dash six, fifty-four ten Highway seventeen Plan Development District Amendment. Consider an application to amend the Plan Development District ZM five two eight one to reconfigure conservation and commercial uses within the PD text and master plan. The property is located at fifty-four ten Highway seventeen Parcel zero three dash two-six nine zero one, zero three dash two-three two-seven nine, zero three dash one three-one-seven-two, and zero two dash zero 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 one six, and zoned Plan Development District PD. And Mr. Lemmons is again here, and Ms. Leaf, you have this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this ZM twenty-four six, and this is an amendment to the Plan Development District. You may recall, there's been a few different amendments to this particular plan development. Formerly, it was called New Hope Plantation, then changed to Glen New Hope, and now it's called Brentwood New Hope. And this is a property on the north end of Highway seventeen, just south of Hoffel Broadfield Plantation. And the primary purpose of this Plan Development District Amendment is to reconfigure some of the uses on the site. So it's a change to the master plan as well as some change to the Plan Development Text regarding acreage allocated to different uses on the property. And primarily, they're looking to increase their flexibility on the property to move some of the uses around the site, depending on how they want to develop it in the future. So this is the Plan Development Text as amended, or as proposed to be amended, which is also included in your packet. And then here is a survey of the site. And then here is their master plan, and one of the changes that's, is proposed, this, this blue area here. They are showing this is highway commercial and medium residential to increase that flexibility of having commercial or residential on the site in that location. And the Planning Commission on April ninth did recommend five-one. Commissioner Higgins was absent that evening, and Chair Boatwright was opposed to the recommendation, but recommended a five-one to be approved by the Board of Commissioners as presented. And these are your possible motions. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Lemmons is here to represent this application as well.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Well, before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie, when this come originally to us, it was for a movie studio, correct? Is it still that, or do we know at this point? Because it seems like we've changed up a few times. Also, well, we'll get into it later, but is it still, as far as we know, going to be a, a studio?
That, there's still a possible use for that site, and Mr. Lemmons can expand a little bit more on, on any current plans.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't answer.
Yeah, that was what I wanted to make sure of, that this was the same project.
It is.
Now, were they, did they do any more investigation about burial grounds on the site for enslaved people?
They, they do. We actually had a couple of public comments at the Mainland Planning Commission regarding that. So, so Mr. Fred Barber was there at the MPC meeting. He's not able to be here this evening. But he did comment that unfortunately, they were not able to find exact locations. Back in the nineteen seventies, a prior owner had done some work on the site, and those grave markers are no longer able to be found on the property. He did indicate that he's interested in doing a conservation area on the property to preserve and have a memorial. He did mention that he is inviting family members who have, members of their family that are buried on the site to connect with him, to, you know, create that memorial to them. So, that he did share that information at the MPC, and Mr. Lemmons may be able to explain more to.
So he still didn't agree to maybe doing radar or something to make sure?
He did not, he did, so the surveyor, Gary Neville, was, it's on the Mainland Planning Commission. They said they have, during the surveys of the property, have not been able to find any, any trace that there are gravestones or, or burials on the property. He did not, Mr. Barber did not state that he is planning to do anything further in terms of surveys.
So when they did the surveys, what kind of tactics or, you know, tools that they used to say they didn't find anything?
Right. And I, yeah, Mr. Lemmons can talk more about that specific.
All right. And do you want to go ahead and have Mr. Lemmons address that before we open the public hearing?
Jake Lemmons, Robert Civil Engineering. So the Fred, the owner, did a full topographic survey of the property. So the, the spots that were done were every hundred foot interval. So at every hundred feet, there was a spot taken on the site. So, I mean, he was, the surveyors were walking across this full site, and they didn't find any trace, but.
So when you say a spot, what does that mean?
Practically, they, with their, their surveying tools, they went out and literally for every hundred feet, we're getting a ground elevation at that point. So they were there at that point, getting a, a field elevation for every hundred feet across the site.
So were they digging down in the ground?
No, no, they weren't, they weren't digging, doing any digging, just walking across the site, but didn't find any.
So how do you, I mean, what, what does that mean? I understand about a topographical survey. I understand what that is. But how are you going to find if there was something, if it's been years and years? You know, I really want to support this project because I think it's, it's a great project. I just don't understand, and I don't know for sure, but I heard that this, like, thirty thousand dollars could be used to make sure that radar or something to detect the burial grounds. And, and it just seems like he's unwilling to do that.
I, I know, I can speak to the things that he has done. I'm not sure about.
Well, he's already spoken to that. And, but I just don't understand. It's not that much money.
Yeah.
Where's a lot of money to me.
Right.
In, in the scope of this whole project.
Yeah.
I just, that's bewildering to me.
So if, if I may point out a couple of things on this. So one, just this, this PD change, these uses in these areas, the conserved area for this new PD, it's, you can't see it on, on this screen, but you probably, maybe you can see it on yours. It's like around seventy acres. This area has gotten much larger from this PD versus the last PD. So the, the conservation area and the wetland preservation that he's doing on this property has actually, that's one of the reasons he's doing this, to expand that area. So this is areas that will not be developed. We can't, so he can't speak to the exact location of it. He's done a lot of research, met with the families, has been very open with them. He met with Ms. Karen, or he talked to her on the phone earlier this week. And he's told, he said that his intent for the family, he can't, he can't do anything with somebody's bad decision from the past, but he's willing to do what he needs to do to try to help the family and recreate a memorial location. So this area up here, there's an existing home. This is actually his home office in this area off to the side. They're going to end up putting a board, a boardwalk out in, in this area and dedicating a portion as a memorial to, and, and just having family plaques, signage, and help create that with the family recreate what they're saying was there in, in some location. Recreate that in, in this portion of the property here and providing that, this is going to be a road up through here and providing that access to that. And working with the family to get names of folks so that people can be remembered for what, you know, can't be located now. So with that, the, the PD, it's, what's changing is really just this use. It's, instead of just saying highway commercial, it's medium residential as well. All this other stuff is already medium residential. And then the conservation, whoops, the conservation area is just getting larger. So really, it's helping what was there previously. It's not making it any worse.
Sir, if, if they build on top of graves, I, I mean, I don't know. Having somebody's name somewhere is irrelevant. And I don't understand why we cannot find for sure and, you know, do what's necessary to make sure that they don't build on top of somebody's grave. I can't support this.
Mr. Attorney, if they started excavating on that site and discovered a grave, would that not be an automatic stop work for that, or would it?
I'm not sure. I don't think the county would have a, a reg on that, but that might be some state regs. Now, I'd have to check with, on those regs to see, but I think it would be if they did discover that.
If they would do it, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, but I, I don't personally want to trust. I don't know who's going to be doing the digging. And if they're working for the developer, I mean, they're, they're trying to keep their job. I just don't understand why we can't check. I mean, there are tools to use, unless there are no tools to figure out what's underneath the ground. Then I would understand that. And then we'd, we'd just have to do the armor system. But when we have tools, I, I just don't get it. Because it looks, sounds like there may be something that's already known, but don't want to reveal everything. That could not be true, but it appears that way to me.
So just on, on Fred's behalf, he has done a lot of research on this. No, he hasn't done, I, I'm not sure of any tools to do that. I'm not, that's not something I can speak to. I, I'm not sure. I'm a civil engineer, so I can't speak to that. But I know he's done a lot of research. He's, he's met with the family. He's tried to have, he's met with them on site. He has photos of meeting them on site. He's gone to libraries, reviewing books, history of this whole area, just trying to, to determine everything he can. But with this, I do want to stress that this is zoned already. As it practically, almost as it shows right now, we're just changing the use to residential, and then we're making the conservation area larger. So it's, I do want to just make sure that's pointed out, that it, it's zoned for this now. This whole area, all in here, was previously zoned medium residential, and now all that's turning to conservation use. I, I understand where you're coming from completely. And Mr. Mr. Barber is working with the family, is going to continue to work with the family to make somebody's bad decision in the past right by them.
I'm not holding it to that. I'm just talking about what, because I really want it to be, to be okay.
Yes, sir.
But I, it's, and the last time we did see it, the state was up the road at the Hoffel at the awful burial grounds on on P. Z. L. Road. Preserving that area. And to me, it would have been great to bring them in, since they were here, to have them there. I mean, they were literally working on preserving enslaved persons' burial grounds. Also, I thought there were people with the expertise to use. And if he didn't bring them in, I don't know, I mean, I I don't know what's going on with the site.
Well, I don't know that. I don't know that we can further that discovery tonight. Mr. Fendig, you had a remark?
Yes, sir, I do. I have worked with Mr. Barber in working to bring film companies to that property. Worked very hard with these film companies to get them to come and invest. That issue was discussed at some of those meetings I've had there. The character and concerns, as you know, one of the film studios went to St. Mary's. Unfortunately, a big loss for us. They're going to build there. I don't think that, I I think, I can't speak for Mr. Barber, but I was having conversations with studio people there, and I think that the odds of landing in the studio there, kind of, he realizes, takes a lot for that to happen, and it's probably not going to happen based on this one company that was really ready to move to the coast and went to St. Mary's. So I don't know what his intentions further are. But I know in those discussions also that it was clear, both film companies doing their due diligence. And as he said, Mr. Barber, they did a lot of research. They were not able to find any historical evidence of graves there or or where, and they walked the property. So I'm not saying they're not there, but I'm saying that other than doing a LiDAR, it's called, which is like a lawnmower where you can ride over and do ground penetrating radar, which is very expensive equipment to have, short of that need not needful at the moment, that hadn't been done. But I think that whatever's done, if that concern arises, that we can make that a condition of any building permit that comes up, where there's going to be disturbed ground. So that would be my suggestion for a future heads up for everybody is that when they come in to actually break ground, that we can require LiDAR. But right now, there's no evidence historically in any document between a lot of parties that have researched that issue. Just, that's just my story and my experience with the group.
All right, gentlemen, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two four dash six, 5410 Highway 17 Plan Development District Commend. This is a public hearing. Those who would speak in opposition to ZM dash two four dash six, please come forward, state your name for the record. Those who would speak in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go, close that portion and go to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of ZM dash two four dash six. To speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you. Dash twenty four six as presented with one condition, that upon the application of building permits within that area, that a second consideration for LiDAR radar be used to determination if there are any historical graves. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rafoski. Any further discussion?
So would that be, that would be a condition where there's going to be a building that to have the LiDAR? His motion was a consideration to look at that, so.
Not a requirement. Any other discussion? Those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, passes four three. Item number forty five, ZM dash two four dash seven, 310 Kingsland Avenue rezone. Consider an application to rezone 1.27 acre parcel from R6 to MH6 to allow a manufactured home. The property is located at 310 Kingsland Avenue, parcel zero three dash zero nine one three nine. Charles Moulton, agent for John Jacobs and Beverly Jacob owners, and Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is ZM twenty four seven, and this is a property on Kingsland Avenue. This is Kingsland right here. The star is where the property is located. Whitlock is on the left-hand side of your screen, just to orient you. So this property is currently zoned R6, which allows a single-family dwelling on a 6,000-square-foot lot. It does not allow mobile homes. They are looking to rezone to MH6, which would allow one mobile home or one manufactured home on on this particular lot. According to the applicant, there had, and also surveys as well, there was a mobile home on the property prior and prior years. And according to the applicant, there was a fire a few years ago, and the mobile home did burn. And when they came to apply for a mobile home placement permit, it had been over a year, and the non-conforming status for the property had expired, and they were no longer able to place that mobile home on the property. So it did trigger the need for a rezone to the mobile home zoning, so it could be legally placed on the property again. And so just to kind of show you in context, most of this property, most of the area is is zoned, one, single-family residential. The green shaded areas, those are some of our different mobile home zoning districts. So across the street, across Kingsland, there is mobile home zoning. There's actually several mobile homes on this property right across the street. And you can see, this is M12, it's kind of brighter green. And then behind the property, this lighter green here is an is an M6 property. This is a survey of the property. So this is where they do show that there had been a mobile home on on the property previously. And this is a photo of the dwelling that had had burned, according to the applicant. So this is, the site is currently cleared, and there's nothing on the property now. The MPC did consider this on April 9th, and they recommended six oh with Commissioner Higgins absent to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners as presented. And these are your possible motions. And Charles Moulton is here representing the applicant this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Any discussion before we open the public hearing?
Will this be a regular manufactured home, or is it modular?
So it could be, it could be a single, a single-wide mobile home. So it could be, so our manufactured, so some of our zones would allow manufactured home, but not, not a single-wide, it would have to be a double-wide. This particular zoning district could be a single-wide mobile home or a manufactured home. So it's really a variety of types that could go on that property.
Ms. Lee, are there any other mobile homes in that area?
Yes, sir. Across the street, so this is, this is Kingsland, right below the star, this kind of mint-green color, there are mobile homes right across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lee, one other question. When the mobile home was there originally, was it zoned for a mobile home, or was it oversight by?
No, sir, it was not, it was not zoned for a mobile home. It was zoned R6, so it it allowed a stick-built, single-family home, but not a mobile home. So I'm not sure how long that mobile home had been on that site, but it was non-conforming. It was not allowed to, not allowed to be there under the current zoning.
Okay.
Any other discussion before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two four dash seven for 310 Kingsland Avenue. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of ZM dash two four dash seven, please come forward, state your name for the record. To speak in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those who wish to speak in favor of ZM dash two four dash seven, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Chuck Moulton. I'm an attorney with Williams, Rinson, Moulton. I represent John and Beverly Jacobs. I'm here to answer any questions. Commissioner Clark, you asked about the use. There had been a mobile home, to the best of my client's knowledge, there had been a mobile home in that location since the late 1940s. That lasted, it was there, there was a mobile home on that site up until July of 2022, when the mobile home fire destroyed the mobile home. And that, the applicants weren't aware of a need to replace it within 12 months. They came along at month 13, and were informed, were informed that somewhere along the way, the zoning ordinance went into place. So the mobile home was a non-conforming use, and it had been more than 12 months. And so at that point, they had to seek a full-fledged rezoning rather than just getting a permit. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Anyone else that wished to speak in favor of ZM dash two four dash seven? To speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you until we put up our possible motions.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Was somebody living there at the time, or is this a rental property?
If I can defer to the applicant to answer that.
It was a rental property. My clients bought the property as a rental property in 2015, and so the mobile home fire occurred in 2022. And obviously, they are looking to to put another mobile home back on the property to 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 restore their investment.
Okay.
Gentlemen. All right, I will make a motion then to approve ZM dash two four dash seven as presented. Second. All right, I have a motion by myself, a second by Commissioner Tostes, and any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is six four, those against, one against. All right, item number forty six, ZM dash two four dash eight, 101 Boyd Drive rezone. Consider an application to rezone a 1.2 acre parcel from R12 to MH20 to allow for manufactured homes. The property is located at 101 Boyd Drive, parcel number zero three dash zero four four two zero. David Doughty, Jackson Engine, uh, Jackson Surveying, agent for Anna E. Bannaluce, I apologize. And Afrin Lopez Hernandez are the owners. And Ms. Leaf, I apologize for for not pronouncing the names correctly, but you have the floor.
All right, this is ZM twenty four eight, and this is a rezoned at 101 Boyd Drive. This is at the corner of Old Jessup Drive and Boyd. They are currently zoned R12, which allows a 12,000-square-foot lot, and it allows a single-family home, but it does not allow a mobile or mobile homes or manufactured homes. So they are seeking to rezone to MH20, which would allow a mobile home on a 20,000-square-foot or greater lot. And this is the property right here. On the right-hand side, this is Old Jessup, and then Boyd is just to the top of the star here. And just to kind of orient you, some other zoning, so everything along Boyd is zoned R12. Across the street, it's mostly a single-family residential, but this green, the green shaded lots are are mobile home zoning that's within the vicinity. And the blue, thank you, yeah, there's also blue to the south right here, that's MH. And so what we have in this property is actually five historic lots that's combined on the tax parcel. And so they are seeking to actually take the five historic lot, historic zoning lots, and reduce those down to two. And so this property is over an acre in size, so each of those two zoning lots would be over 20,000 square feet. So it would meet the zoning of a mobile home per 20,000 square feet. And they're also both, since they're both over half an acre, it would allow for them to get a septic permit as long as they meet all the other environmental health requirements, and they are in public water, which is along Old Jessup. And so this shows where these historic lots is kind of, the the dash magenta lines are these five historic lots that are on this one parcel, and the parcel's outlined in turquoise. Jackson Surveying, I did submit a letter, and it's also in your package, just kind of outlining their proposal about going from the five to two lots. And this is a survey of the property. And this is a view, heading north or looking north on Old Jessup, there is a single-family home. That's really the closest single-family home of, you know, to this property on this side of the property. And then, as I mentioned, along Boyd is all all residential, single-family as well. So the Planning Commission did consider this on April 9th, and the vote was four two to recommend approval to the board. Commissioner Higgins was absent, and Commissioners Edgy and New were opposed. The condition that was placed on this for the recommendation was subject to the approval of the expedited plat, creating two lots from the five lots. So this would require an expedited subdivision to come through the county in order to officially replat it and create those those two lots. These are your possible motions. And then there is a possible motion if they fit as your desire to go with the MPC recommendation, and that adds in this condition about going from five to two. And Mr. Doughty is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Mr. Seney, discussion before we open the public hearing?
So, Ms. Leaf, so for use with the mobile homes, is it a maximum of two mobile homes that can be on the two lots?
So the two lots, it would only be one mobile home per lot. So on this parcel, the max that they would, you would see, would be two mobile homes on this parcel. So it'd be one per lot, once they reduce it down to the two zoning lots.
Can you speak to the septic tank situation on the property?
So the owners at the MPC meeting did say that there was an existing septic tank on the property. I don't know what what condition that's in, so it would need to have the Environmental Health Department inspect it to see if it could serve one of the units. But they would be required to do do a second septic tank, because they would have to have one septic tank per mobile home. They are on public water on Old Jessup, so they would be able to hook into joint water and sewer for public water.
Okay.
So these, this, this is not a medical request. This is just to, I guess, rent them out?
Correct, it is not for the medical hardship, which is a, you know, conditional use or special use permit to do that. No, these would be permanently allowed on the site if the rezon was approved to have mobile homes on this property. So and so moving forward, if those mobile homes go away, someone else could come in and put mobile homes as well on the property. I believe they, are they renting them, or they're for family members, I believe? And I can defer to the applicant, if you'd like, for more details on that.
Yes.
I'm David Doughty, representing the applicant. They actually own a piece of property on Haltalia that has two mobile homes, and they were actually in the process of building a home. And he is, wasn't aware of the rules, and he started building a home without a permit and had two mobile homes and a house on one lot. And he's wanting to move the the mobile homes off that lot so he can continue with building the house. So it's family members that would move existing mobile homes over, you know, so he was just finding a suitable piece of property for existing homes for his family.
All right, I mean, it seems like.
Because he didn't have, the property's not big enough on Haltalia, that split.
Yeah, it it just seems like we're rewarding folk who are not really following the rules. And and to say that they didn't know. And you built the house, and you have two other homes. I mean, somebody should know that you should check with with the county.
Yeah.
For for.
I mean, I agree, but I mean, he's just asking for a rezoning because he's found suitable property instead of putting five homes on there and trying to figure out how to run sewer to those things.
No, I understand it, but I guess my thing is, when we're making these decisions, especially, it depends on what the area is. And we are rewarding people who are not following the rules. And and it doesn't, depending on where it is, I'm not sure if if that's how we make the decisions. So, but anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Seney, any other comments before we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, just to, I'm sorry, does somebody else have something? Just to confirm, so with the, with the rezone, there would actually be less dense. Just to confirm, uh, so with the, um, with the rezon, there would actually be less density to the mobile homes, and that's important at that location right there.
Yes, sir, that is correct. There would be, like, because right now, they, they have, um, because it's an old plat that was done, you know, prior to our, our zoning ordinance, they do have five lots of record on the site. Now, they, they are, they are substandard, they don't meet the twelve-thousand-square-foot lot, but there are five legal lots there. But if they could exactly figure out how to hook, hook into sewer and water, potentially, they could have five homes there.
The question is, is there sewer there?
That is a good, I do not know how far sewer, sewer is not there, but I'm not sure exactly where it extends to.
So really, those five lots you can't use?
Not currently.
Not like they are?
Right, correct.
And one more question, with the rezon, the access and egress will be to Boyd Drive? It won't be directly on the Old Jessup?
So there, but there's no prohibition, um, onto Old Jessup, though, so that would, that would, I would suggest as a condition, if that, if it is your desire to approve it, um, there wouldn't be currently any kind of prohibition on, on going onto Old Jessup. Definitely makes no sense to go to Boyd, but I don't know if we, um, unless you made that a condition of the rezon.
I have one simple question. On Boyd Drive, are there any mobile homes on Boyd Drive? Are these single-family residents with foundations and, and, uh, structured homes?
From what I could tell from driving down Boyd, it, it looked like all of them are single-family homes.
So there are no mobile homes on this drive at present? That have not, have never been?
Yeah, I don't want to be a hundred percent, but I, from what I could tell from Boyd, it didn't look like they were mobile homes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
But there are, there are two there now, right?
No.
On this property, the property is currently vacant.
Oh, okay, they're moving that from the other property.
That's right, yeah, it's off, yeah, it's currently on another property across town.
All right.
Ready to open the public hearing? Uh, this is a public hearing for, uh, ZM dash two-four dash eight, one-on-one Boyd Drive rezon. Any who wish to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, oppositions? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just speaking in opposition to, uh, opposed to it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, apologize. Um, my name is Anna Bannalooce.
She's, she's the applicant.
Yeah, so it isn't your time to speak yet.
Oh, opposition.
Okay, all right, that's fine. To speak in opposition to ZM dash two-four dash eight, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, um, my name is Donnie Boyd Wright. Donnie Boyd Wright.
Little closer to the mic, if you could.
Donnie Boyd Wright.
Okay.
And we are opposed to, um, the mobile homes being placed on Boyd Drive. Um, our concerns are our property values. We're concerned, um, that it was purchased as a residential. We have quite a few people that are against it, that's here with us, and we would just really rather have a residential home, not mobiles.
Any other comment? And if you would, state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Deana Boyd. One of the questions we had were what were the guidelines that were used when considering rezoning for this neighborhood, for our neighborhood? And, um, that there have been in the past other families that requested, um, a resident to move in a mobile home, and they were denied. So we just wondered what had changed, you know? But, but like Donnie said, that when it, when Anna and purchased the property, they, she purchased it as a residential, twelve, whatever it is, but, uh, and then now they're, you know, would like to put a mobile home on it instead. So we just, that was our concern.
All right, thank you. Any other comment? All right. Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to ZM dash two-four dash eight? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Lee Frazier. My husband and I live on Breckenridge Drive. If you look at your map up there, we're down the, the subdivision ones at the bottom of your map. Those are all single-family homes. There are about twenty-five homes in Breckenridge subdivision. But recently, well, it's been in the last five years, I'm not sure exactly when, at, uh, in the three-hundred block of Scranton Road, we watched people come in and take an existing double-wide trailer, very old trailer. They cleared the land around it, and they brought in a single-wide trailer and set it up. And then a couple of months later, we see a yellow sign where they're rezoning the property. That was on Scranton Road, that property was commercial property. The people came in and did this before they got permission. I don't think that's the way it's supposed to work. Now, at one-on-one Boyd Drive, somebody has come in, bought the property, cleared the property, and now they want to rezon it for trailers. If you wanted to put trailers, why wouldn't you go buy the land that's already zoned for trailers, instead of coming into a, a private subdivision area to put trailers? Ms. Leaf was not quite correct. She said that that was the only house that was near the lot when she showed the pictures while ago. Right across from the blue star is a very pretty brick home, nice property. That whole area is, houses, houses people who've been there for many years. I've been there twenty-five years in my subdivision. We just really don't want mobile homes to move in there. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to ZM dash two-four dash eight?
Hey, Butz Geiger? Um, I can remember back when the Rickenbacks lived there, they had a big two-story house right on the same lot, and as far as it being five lots, I have no idea, but anyway, I have no idea where y'all live. Don't really, really matter, you know, but I can imagine you not wanting to come home, turning down in your subdivision, and guess what the first two things you're gonna see when you turn into your house? And we've lived there all our lives, and I just, I mean, if they want to build a house or two there, hey, that would be great. But as far as trailers, you know, I, I just don't think it's fair, and, because we've built houses there, my house is like twenty years old now, but my mom and dad lived there all their life, and all my life, really, off and on. But it's just, I mean, as far as the well goes, there hadn't been a well there in probably, I mean, a septic tank there maybe in thirty years. Ms. Rickenback's house, it burnt down, and that's, that's what, I remember it being there very well. But as far as the mobile homes, you know, it's just, uh, I, just think of it as your place, and when you, when you lived there all your life, and you go down there, and that's the first thing you see when you turn to go home, a couple of trailers, and it's just, I just, we just don't think it's fair. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to ZM dash two-four dash eight? Anyone else to speak in opposition? We'll close out that portion of the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of ZM dash two-four dash eight, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Okay, good afternoon. Um, well, I'm the owner, Anna Bannalooce, we bought this property two years ago, so I guess the property was, it was like, uh, I guess a forest. But, um, when we bought it, there was a mobile home there, a mobile home. So that wasn't the only mobile home that was there. There's another mobile home right now in the really end of the highway, the one-on-one old Boyd Drive. There's one mobile home there, so I don't know why they're saying there's no mobile homes. And there's more mobile homes, kind of like more a little bit far where K Road is, a little bit more front. So, um, and where K Road is, there's even mobile homes. But, um, for that property, um, we have a, a septic tank, so if there's necessary, we have to put another one, we'll just put another one if it's necessary. But we're gonna put water, sewer, we're gonna put that too. And our mobile home, it's a zone two, so I guess it is possible to move it if it let us. So I don't know why they're, they don't want a mobile home there, it's just, it's, I know it's just two different things, it's a mobile and a house, but we're a single-family, uh, we don't do no drama, we don't do fighting, nothing like that. We just want to move our mobile home there in a new property, we just finished cleaning it. So I guess, I don't know what we can do about that.
All right. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM dash two-four dash eight? To speak in favor?
I just, uh, one more-
State your name one more time, please state.
I'm David Dowdy, uh, to speak in favor of, uh, this most, of, uh, the mobile homes there. Um, this is more kind of a comment of anybody in the room is, uh, if you know who Phil Robertson is, he's a millionaire, multimillionaire, who lives in a mobile home. And if it was Phil Robertson moving in on that corner, nobody would say a word.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM dash two-four dash eight? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Um, first of all, I, let me address what the gentleman just said, that's completely not true. And secondly, this is the reason why I didn't vote for the previous, um, uh, item on Whitlock, which is in my district, this is not in my district, uh, because we should be replacing these mobile homes, where I was a lot more in, off of Whitlock. We should be replacing them with, um, regular stick-built, or even if it was modular homes that we appreciate in value, these mobile homes do not. And so it's not uplifting the value of the neighbors or the area, uh, which is why I wouldn't support this. And so, um, I understand why the neighbors don't want it there.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, there's no mobile homes on Boyd Drive, um, right now. There is, uh, framed houses, and those houses have been there a very long time. I've, uh, got calls and emails from the residents that live there. Um, and to Mr. Booker's point earlier, it seems as though we're taking a, a wrong at another location and impacting these neighbors who have been minding their own business, um, and rewarding that after they built a house on a piece of property they shouldn't have built a house on. I would like to say to them, uh, the Boyd Drive folks would not have a problem with a house being built there, or two. So, and sir, your comments were, don't, don't do that kind of stuff. You're trying to get votes, don't do that. Just word of the wise. But anyway, um, I'm totally against this. There's houses there, uh, there's some old, uh, stuff around there, I think there was a car on this lot, um, you know, this is just, uh, the residents there, they're in homes, and it should be two homes there, um, not two, not two trailers moved in there.
Any other discussion? Entertained a motion?
Stephanie, would you put the motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny ZM dash twenty-four dash eight.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tostes and a second by Commissioner Clark to, uh, deny ZM dash two-four dash eight. Any other discussion? Those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number forty-seven, ZM dash two-four dash three, one-twenty-five Glendale Drive rezon. Consideration of a rezoning of one-twenty-five Glendale Drive and one-twenty-seven Glendale Drive from Office Commercial to Freeway Commercial parcels, uh, IDs zero-three dash two-six-six-three-three and zero-three dash zero-three-six-five-seven. Josh Kirkland, owner, and, uh, Mr. Carey, floor is yours.
Yes, sir, Christopher Carey, Galway County Planning and Zoning. Before tonight, we do have a rezoning for one-twenty-five and one-twenty-seven Glendale Drive. Here is the site. Uh, the request is to rezon Office Commercial to Freeway Commercial. As you see, there are two other zonings on the board. Uh, we have ZM two, two thousand seven sixteen, which would be these two properties that were rezoned in two thousand seven, and then all of these properties to the north and west would, were rezoned in nineteen sixty-six to Freeway Commercial. The total area of the property is two-point-five-nine acres. The existing development is non-conforming for the usage of the property. Commercial parking is their intended use, uh, going forward in Freeway Commercial. And again, the background on the rezonings. And here is the FC zoning that is being requested. There are fourteen different uses that are currently permitted. I can go back. And here is Office Commercial, uh, excuse me, uh, this is actually Freeway Commercial, so this is blown up for Freeway Commercial of their permitted uses.
Just keep going.
All right. And here are Office Commercial uses, so there are five permitted uses, an Office Commercial and fourteen in Freeway Commercial. And here is your zoning exhibit. Here's the site. And the Mail and Planning Commission recommended approval, five to one, with, uh, recommendation that there be an opaque architectural fence going around the property, eight foot at minimum against the Freeway Commercial, and a ten-foot fence around, uh, the residential zone properties with shrubbery included. And here is just an outline of what that fencing would look like. So in blue, you have your architectural fencing. In light green, you have your eight-foot fence or greater, and then the green dotted around the perimeter of the property for the shrubbery. And here are your possible motions. We do have the property owner, Mr. Kirkland, here as well, and that is all from staff.
And Mr. Carey, you mentioned a intended use, did, did you not, when you started your presentation? Can you tell me?
Yes, sir, commercial parking. So parking of commercial equipment and, uh, vehicles.
Okay. Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Carey, so if you're on Glendale Drive and you're facing the property, the usage that's immediately to the left, that, is that zoned, um, Office Commercial?
Yes, the office park area is zoned Office Commercial, that would be one-on-seven Glendale, is that correct?
I don't have that address. If you, if you look, Commissioner Sweat, one-on-seven is-
That's correct, and so, and they share a drive, those two properties, one-on-seven and-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
All right, commissioners, anything else before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two four dash three, one twenty five Glendale Drive rezoned. Uh, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. To speak in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, close that portion. Those wish to speak in favor of ZM dash two four dash three, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Daniel Stroh, I'm with Robert Tate here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Kirkland, who is also in attendance, uh, and available for any questions as well. Uh, I, I will be brief, I just wanna point out a few items, uh, to bring to your attention. Uh, as presented by staff, uh, the two properties located to the left. Hey, uh, as I was saying, just the two properties that were previously rezoned, the Freeway Commercial, these two are also currently owned by Mr. Kirkland, and the use for the two adjacent properties that we're seeking the rezoning for will be consistent with those two properties. Uh, and I would also like to point out that the future land use map for this area is also shown as, uh, Commercial Freeway Commercial for this side of Glendale Drive. And one other item that I'd also like to bring to the attention of the commission is, in response to the concerns raised at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, Mr. Kirkland has met with the developer of the residential property, Settlers Cove, which is located here. And they've reached a written agreement, uh, regarding that if these two properties are rezoned, Mr. Kirkland has agreed to install a eight-foot privacy fence, uh, along Glendale Drive, uh, that would match the current fence located at Settlers Cove. And in front of that fence would be, uh, shrubbery and landscaping. And he would also repave the, well, no. Sorry, I lost the cursor there. Uh, the driveway here is Mr. Kirkland's property, and he would replace the asphalt located here with concrete and correct any pavement to reduce, uh, any dust or other debris that, that may have been, uh, generated by the current state of that driveway. Uh, and then finally, I would just point out that along the back of the property is a drainage ditch that we believe is maintained by the county. Uh, so we're concerned, uh, that requiring fencing along the back, uh, may not be feasible, given that, given that drainage ditch. Uh, so unless there are any questions, we would request, uh, that the rezoning be approved for all of these reasons, as, and, and, uh, consistent with the written agreement entered into by Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Miller of, of Settlers Cove. I also have a copy of that agreement with me today, if the commissioners would like a, a copy at this time.
Thank you, sir, I, I believe most of us, I don't know if everyone got it, but several did. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM dash two four dash three? To speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, um, uh, on this letter here, is there a timetable for this fence, this shrubs to be installed?
Well, I believe Mr. Kirkland is here as well, I believe if the rezoning is approved, he would move forward, you know, as soon as possible with, with.
With the corrections.
State your name, please, for further.
I'm sorry, Josh Kirkland, um, thank y'all for hearing from me tonight, commissioners. Um, if y'all would allow me maybe sixty days or something, I'll be happy to get it all fenced as quickly as possible, and shrubbery planted.
Is, is the fence going all the way down Glendale?
All the way down Glendale, including the properties that aren't in need of rezoning, I'll go all the way to the corner. I don't have to do this, but. So, my property starts here, so the intent is to fence and shrubbery down this property, down the fence behind the existing office, across here, back out the fence, back to this corner lot here. Um, I also agree with Clint that in the event if I ever clear the, um, buffer here, um, that I'd put the same exact fence and, uh, shrubbery up there as well.
Mr. Kirkland, a question?
Sure, yes, sir.
So is that your property, uh, the red property that's, um?
This property here?
That, yes.
No, sir, it's not.
Okay, how's it being used, that property?
Uh, this property, well, it's being used by homeless people. This property here that's R nine, um, just to the north of me here, this is a office trailer that's partially on Freeway Commercial, partially on residential. Um, it's currently being rented out to a company for office use, but that's not mine either.
For clarification, the, um, the fencing that we received some information on?
Yes, sir.
Today?
Yes, sir.
What is different with it, uh, when you look at the condition of the mainland planning?
So the fence that, the only condition, the only difference between what the mainland com, um, planning, uh, had asked, requested was they wanted it down the backside as well. Uh, and in my opinion, you know, there's a drainage ditch back there that's maybe ten or twelve feet wide and four feet deep, it's not really feasible to, um, I currently have up razor wire, you know, down the ditch, because it's not really feasible to put up a fence, um, I'm sure the county at some point's gonna wanna come clean that out again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Uh, looking, uh, through those tax parcels, you are acquiring a, a number of properties there. Do you have a future use that you could share with us, or?
Uh, for which properties?
Well, you've, you've acquired a good number of those surrounding properties already.
So currently, um, you know, we're using this area for our parking and, um, things of that nature for the trucking company and roll off.
I'm sorry, I can't see the cursor, let, help me find you.
Well, here we go.
There.
So these properties are all current, these properties are all currently, um, being used for our trucking company and roll-off container business. Um, the hope is that eventually we rezon this, uh, and work with, uh, the county and possibly build a, um, storage building, office building, um, on these, uh, additional properties. Let me find the cursor, I'm sorry. There it is, um, here, um, in the back, uh, that's my future plan. Um, of course, we've got to go through zoning for that and, and planning, mainland planning and, and so forth, but.
All right. All right, um.
Any further questions?
Commissioners, uh, any other?
So you don't own that property that's in the light?
I own all that, yeah, I own all that property, Commissioner Booker. I, I do. Yeah, let's, let me s, make sure we're clear here. So I own, uh, this partial parcel here. Uh, this parcel I don't own, it was owned by Kids First, uh, Kids First was dissolved in two thousand eight. I'm currently trying to acquire that property. Um, that's that small R nine parcel, parcel right here. Uh, I own this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, which comes across to here. Yes, sir, I, I own that property as well, yes, sir.
So I, I guess you don't have many surrounding neighbors opposing then, do you, since you own most of them?
Not a lot.
Tongue-in-cheek, sorry, it's getting late. Uh, any other discussion, commissioners? Entertain a motion?
Uh, this is in my district, uh, and, uh, I have talked with several people, and we were looking at, talking with, uh, community development and how we, I mean, commercial, Freeway Commercial is, is a very broad and very extensive rezone, uh, for an area such as this. And, um, there are, there have been restrictions already placed, uh, from mainland planning on this, but I know that there was concerns that I have and concerns that other commissioners have, have made along with this other discussions. But until we can get these things sorted out, I would like, make a motion to move, move to deny, not, not to deny, but to defer this until our next meeting, so we can clear up some, uh, uh, other avenues that we have concerning, uh, the applications that go along with this particular zoning. Uh, and that will be my motion.
Second?
Have a motion by Commissioner, toss this in a second by Commissioner Sweat. Any other discussion? Those in favor to defer until our next meeting, ZM dash two four dash three, please raise your right hand. I guess that is a deferral. Item number forty eight, CUP dash two four dash two, thirteen oh six Old Jessup Road, conditional use permit. A consideration of a county-sponsored application for a conditional use po, uh, permit for an automotive service station in the, uh, local commercial district. Property is located at thirteen oh six Old Jessup Road, parcel zero three dash zero three eight three one. And the business is existing, Glen County Board of Commissioners are the sponsor. Uh, Commissioner Rofoski is on the, uh, agenda as the applicant for Bliss LLC owner, uh, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, uh, CUP twenty four two, uh, this is an existing, uh, convenience store and, with fuel pumps, um, that's been in, um, in its current location since the nineteen eighties. Uh, this is a county-sponsored application for a conditional use permit. And the primary reason is the property is zoned local commercial, and in local commercial, the convenience store is a permitted use. Uh, but because there's fuel, fuel pumps on site, then the property is, um, known as an automotive service station, or automobile service station, and so because of that, um, an automotive service station is a conditional use in the LC zoning. Um, this came to staff's, and this property is located on Old Jessup, um, this is, uh, at the, near the intersection of Glendale and Old Jessup, so you can see this is, um, the local commercial site. Uh, it was rezoned from Forest Agricultural to Local Commercial in nineteen eighty seven, and so it is surrounded by the FA zoning. And then here is an aerial view of the property as well. And so this did, um, come to staff's attention, um, the applicant was applying for an occupational, um, tax certificate and an alcohol license, and during the staff, um, the planning's own review of those permits, it was, um, it was seen that there was no conditional use permit on, on record. In the nineteen eighties, when this property was built, um, we do have a building permit from nineteen eighty nine. When it was built, um, this would have been a conditional use, um, in that, in that zone. So, um, I'm not sure what happened at the time, we, we couldn't pull enough information from county records, um, to be able to verify exactly what had happened at that time. But regardless, the site was developed, um, and there was no conditional use permit that we were able to locate in our county records. And so that brings us to, uh, the application tonight, to clean up the zoning, bring it into compliance, and, um, and have that on, on our books. So this is the survey of the property, and then this is just a, um, street view, uh, from Old Jessup looking into the property. The Mainland Planning Commission held a public hearing, uh, on, uh, April ninth. Uh, Commissioner Higgins was absent, it was unanimous six oh to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners as presented. And these are your possible motions.
You know, you know, the shame of this is for, since nineteen eighty seven till, till this year, this has been allowed. So that's one of the reasons I brought it forward. I mean, you know, the county, I guess, would have been negligent in the past because on occupational tax, I guess these things were supposed to be checked, and they weren't checked. And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, I, I call these things sins of our fathers. We didn't do it, but somebody's gotta fix it. So basically, that, that's the reason I sponsored this, uh, I just want the public to know why.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comment before we open the public hearing? I will add too, that when I was made aware of this, this, these are the kind of things that we as a county look to try to avoid. Uh, but because of the rules and regulations that the county has to go by, we have to correct these things once they're found. Uh, the expedited correction is what we're seeking, and, uh, and when we find these, uh, try to, try to get them corrected at a minimum of, uh, delay and discomfort to the occupant of the building. We're working diligently, uh, moving forward to try to correct these issues of, of, um, you know, mistakes, uh, things that fall through the crack in previous, previous years. Uh, so, uh, this is a public hearing, any other comment before we open? Okay. Uh, for CUP dash two four dash two, thirteen oh six Old Jessup Road, conditional use permit, any that wish to speak in opposition to CUP dash two four dash two, please come forward, state your name for the record. To speak in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion, if you wish to speak in favor of CUP dash two four dash two, please come forward, state your name for the record. To speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
So the commis, uh, conditional use, what is the length of time?
So there is no time limit on the com, on the conditional use permit, so if this is granted, then, um, it will run with the land, and, um, and so as long as they don't expand it or change it in violation of what has been approved, then it can stay as is.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve CUP twenty four dash two as presented.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Clark, to approve CUP dash two four dash two. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Uh, item number forty nine is appointment, nominate three citizens for consideration of appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital authority will make the final appointment, the term begins immediately upon appointment and ends April thirty, twenty twenty eight. Applications received from Angela Hayes, uh, John George, Michael Mizoda, Don Snell, Sherry Swick. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to see if we could, uh, defer this at this time.
You wanna make that in form of a motion?
I wanna make that in form of a motion.
Second?
Have a motion from Commissioner, toss this in a second from Commissioner Clark, to defer this item. Uh, to date certain or future meeting?
Future meeting.
To a future meeting. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, uh, brings us to public comment period, we have one speaker tonight, uh, Ms. Miranda Smith. Uh, at long last, you get to speak, and, uh, if it could be less than five minutes, but, but you certainly have five minutes for the record.
I don't think I will run over, I'm gonna speed through it, so just pay attention. Okay, good evening, I am Miranda Music Smith, and here to speak and represent local victims of fraud and financial crime injustices in Gold, in the Golden Isles. The white collar crimes that are not being publicized or prosecuted, which means the local citizens are not being protected or warned. Upon hearing about the proclamation in the Victims' Rights Week, I was flabbergasted and yet confused at the irony. It seems to me all of these actions and advocacy, advocacy, you understand, platforms that are, are just a facade for the attraction of the Golden Isles and tourists. When my experience in learning and fighting for justice recently has not been anything like what is continually represented before we elect and hire in Glen County. In February news, Kevin Jones reported a nineteen percent decrease in crime, and I can understand why. In our once small-town, safe community, it is probably more likely that our wealthy retired residents will become victims of fraud and financial crimes like contractor thefts, Ponzi schemes, theft by conversion and forgery, than they will be victims of violent crimes in the Golden Isles. Why are they not protected or made aware by promoting the locations of Georgia laws that govern contractor crimes, such as the Victims' Bill of Rights, title chapter, title and chapter seventeen, or the Crimes Law in the Georgia Title sixteen, Chapter eight? Why is it that I was told by the Victims' advocacy that Chief Ebner and Assistant DA Lush promoted publicly, along with all the good things they intend to do, she couldn't help me because I didn't have an active case? Her understanding was it was investigated and closed, to my surprise, and contradictory to what I have been briefed and told over the last four years, I tried to use. to use the guidance offered, but my rights have been denied and subsequently erased as a victim, like other victims I now know. I will say that she did arrange finally that meeting in person that I was entitled to, only after I filed the warrant hearing myself so that my statute wouldn't run as they intended it for to do. Chief Baptiste posted the policy manual for all to see the procedures of the department on the website. It outlines subjects in chapter six, like initial investigation, officer responsibilities, discontinuation of investigations, and who makes that decision. It is not how my case was handled. However, no one with oversight responsibility wants to hear my complaints and improve what is broken or accept accountability. They continue to fire and hire new replacements, and my case goes to the side. People will continue will stop coming forward if they are being turned away and continue to watch victims as they know are to be at are being ignored without any repercussions to the criminal reports they are making. I know this because I see the public forum conversations between them, and I know I am not alone. Our rights and the laws do not change simply because you do not have an attorney with you or can't afford one and rely on the local law enforcement. It is insulting and contradicted by argument being stated as laws when you know from the studies and legal counsel the statute begins to run not only at the time the crime occurs, but also when you become aware of the crime or should have known of the crime. I know the day I discovered the crime by heart. There is no question, and it is it isn't even plausible that fraud, forgery, and altering any document to collect an elevated amount of money is meant to be just that, an undetectable fraud, hard to find. It was just discovered after years here in Public Works, Glen County. When a judge says to you, but you don't have an attorney here today, that doesn't change my rights and the fact that my rights should be protected from such foolery attempts of violation upon any victim. Law enforcement should make their arrest, and a prosecutor or prosecutor should let the people decide before a grand jury. I have diligently but patiently fought the good fight and listened to investigator Butler, Lieutenant Hun- Herndon cover him and tell me my case was open open, and I could supplement the evidence when I obtained more of what they needed. And it was denied twice, once at the station and once at the property, trying to file a new report for the state agency and at the direction of D A Higgins regarding how to go back and reorganize my file to support the crimes he could prove. While a new investigator was requested by him to review, I was met with strong resistance by the former investigator Butler, down to a very angry voicemail in response. I began copying emails to all of you, including the Lieutenant Governor and Sheriff. You were tasked with the public safety and over law enforcement here, and I felt you should know my story when I became aware that the state afforded us an additional one hundred and twenty-four days for COVID shutdown cases, the time that mine occurred. Yet only one person responded and called me. Mr. Fallon was directed to contact me and never attempted to. Merely stated my case had been investigated to you all and not my side of the experience. No one ever told me it had been closed, and Lieutenant Herndon kept simply lying to cover the shoddy investigation. They did not want to supplement, and there was still time to make the felony arrest if the new promising chief had listened, checked behind the unethical work done by the investigator that was given a promotion and now is no longer employed by Glen County. He was also recently excused from subpoena at the midnight hour, which meant no one could verify the recorded interview, the good thing that he had done. Who is to be held accountable for oversight? How can there be oversight when no one wants to really know what happened by engaging the victim or corrective criticism? Butler admittedly never called the two eyewitnesses for statements and never met with me in person, and he could would have known the testimony, and copies that were provided to him were the altered copies, not originals, and to work a little harder by exercising his powers to obtain them. This is the last. This there is no excuse, and the excuses the gaslighting only makes our sergeant and lieutenant look laughable laughably incompetent, and although another victim has recently come forward with a written contract and turned away, the response is always the same financial crime victims. It's a civil matter with a contract, and it's a civil matter without one. Or you can go to the magistrate and ask for a warrant hearing and do our job for us.
Miss Music.
That that is it.
That's seven minutes.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
I was trying. Okay. Yes, I just would like for the viewers to know there is information out there to prevent this, and the Secretary of State has rules and regulations, and also the Georgia laws that are online, and they should look for them. I wasn't aware they were there. Thank you.
All right, Todd. This evening, we do have need for executive session for land, personnel, potential legal, all of the above.
Do we have personnel?
Do. I thought we did. No personnel?
I don't think so.
I thought that was.
It's just uh potential litigation and property matters.
Potential litigation and property matters.
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session for pro- possible litigation and property matters?
Yeah, potential litigation and property. Yes, sir.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Sweat to go into executive session. All in favor, reluctantly say aye. All right, Todd. We stand recessed.
Executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Clark, second by Commissioner Raffowski to come out of executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All of us unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the recommendations of the Director of Engineering Services regarding property acquisition.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Raffowski to approve the attorney's recommendation on property acquisition, second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Any other business that's come before the commission? That is unanimous. We stand adjourned.